Once again, ladies and gentlemen, walk through the Village of Bartlett Board Meeting for March 5, 2024. I call the Committee of the Home Meeting to order, and again ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Dany?
Here.
Gansey?
Here.
Gunstein?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Laporte?
Here.
Swansky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. Before we get started, would anybody like to address the committee at this time? If you would like to do so, kindly step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and try to keep your comments to three minutes. Does anyone in the audience like to address any committee topics this evening? John, do we have anybody on line that would like to address the committee?
We do not.
Very well. First standing committee reports this evening is under Building and Zoning Committee Chairman Gunstein.
Thank you, President Wallace. Tonight, we have two items. The first item is Maryville Community Residence. Maryville Academy submitted a development application for a 12.7-acre parcel that they have under contract to purchase, which was originally part of the Immaculate Conception Development. I'm assuming that's what it was, also known as Claire Oaks. The petitioner would like to convert the building formerly used as the Claire Oaks Model Sales Office into a community residence to house up to six persons at a time that are transitioning from state guardianship. The petitioner's requests are as follow: a preliminary and final plan of survey subdivision, amendment to the planned unit development to add community residence as a list of special uses, special use to allow community residence, tax amendment to modify the definition of community residence, and a final site plan, PUD plan. With that, I will turn this over to Kristy Stone for some further feedback on what they're actually doing here.
Thank you, Chairman Gunstein. Maryville Academy is looking at purchasing 12 acres on the east side of the Claire Oaks development at the southwest corner of West Bartlett and South Devon. Originally, the Immaculata development had four sub-areas, and the area that they are looking to purchase is part of Sub Area C and D. The original preliminary PUD plan showed additional town duplexes at the southeast corner of the site they're looking at purchasing, as well as for the future Bartlett Learning Center. Those developments have not occurred, so they are looking to purchase the property and to create a plan of subdivision, which would also grant a permanent access easement for where the private drive is. So, the site plan would be the existing, the red building that you see on West Bartlett Road. They would just be converting the inside of that. It was used as the sales office, so it was already set up for bedrooms and multiple bathrooms. The existing parking lot would remain.
The existing parking lot for Claire Oaks would remain?
For Claire Oaks is still on that property. That parking lot is not required for Claire Oaks. Claire Oaks does have enough adequate parking on what's remaining on their site.
Okay.
For a community residence in our zoning ordinance, we do not allow another community residence within 1,200 feet. So, I created this exhibit so you would see, have an idea of how far away another community residence could be located. So, they couldn't be building additional buildings on this site. This does require a public hearing that would be held before the Planning and Zoning Commission. The applicants are present if you have any additional questions.
Well, I think you may have just addressed my question was, would there be, would this, rezoning this, would this be giving them the opportunity to build a building or something else on those 12 acres in the future?
They would not be able to build another community residence. Our definition requires, limits the number of people that can live in one up to eight. So, what they're planning is one person per bedroom, so there'd be six residents in here. We could have it very specific. They would have to come through a site plan amendment if they were to change anything with this site. Right now, this site is only granting, would be granting approvals for the existing building to be used as a community residence. Any change would have to come back before the board.
As far as building another building?
Correct.
Are there plans for that?
No.
So, why 12 acres? Why are we tying up all 12 acres for a single house?
There is, there are other uses that could be built on this property in the future. The exist, there was a chart? In the memo. This is what Claire Oaks has told them. They want to sell off. So, the detention for Claire Oaks is on this site. They would still have the option to further subdivide this property in the future and come back before the board if they want to do any future developments for any of the other uses, such as townhomes, offices, things of that nature.
So, the detention is on the property that they're selling?
Yes.
Who's responsible then to maintain this?
That is what they would be working out. So, right now, Claire Oaks is responsible per the subdivision, per the existing easement restrictions that are on that lot.
How do you feel about that?
It's, it's a matter, I mean, it's a recorded document. The easement provisions are recorded, so they are enforceable.
Can you explain to me, well, what this term means, persons that are transferring from state guardianship? I didn't understand. I don't understand it.
So, would you like to clarify that?
Get the representative up there.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. My name is John George. I'm an attorney, and I represent Maryville Academy. With me is Sister Kathy Ryan, head of Maryville, and she'll answer the question.
Participants are waiting in the lobby. To admit all participants in the lobby, press * 2, 1.
John's not as good as Chris.
Sorry about that.
I'm Sister Catherine Ryan. With me is Evelyn Smith, who is our administrator for our campus. You have welcomed us here in Bartlett for over 30 years on our Eisenberg Campus, which is 950 Bartlett Road. This is about 700. And for this particular program, we have on the campus itself one home for young ladies with cognitive delay who are in the legal custody of DCFS. When they complete that program, we've found that their, DCFS doesn't have next places for them to go that will help prepare them for more, what we would call transitional living. And so, our plan for this, this house, we call it the red house, would be that six of these young ladies could live in this house and learn those community skills that would be the next step after they're having been with us on the campus. And if I could just address about the size of the property, if I may, that's not, was your earlier question? We originally arranged with the Sisters of St. Joseph to purchase just the house, the parking lot, and the area around it. They asked us to please buy the entire parcel. We don't have a need for it. We don't have any plan for it, but they asked us to do it as a package because they wanted to finish that particular piece. So, we don't need 12 acres, but that's what they asked us to buy.
Do you not, thank you for the work that you do, by the way?
Thank you.
I think I was looking at your website. Don't you not currently have transitional facilities at the existing campus? Or are you just looking to just move them to a different location?
We don't have the kind of transitional program that we're talking now. Let me just, Evelyn Smith, who's been at the Bartlett Campus for 33 years, so she'll keep me honest here, if we could do that. But the programs we have now are what we call group homes, and so they're more structured for the young ladies, and they are going to school. And what we want to do is help them the next step. They finish school, they're getting jobs, they're learning more skills in the community.
Correct. Yes, having job, because these would be young ladies that would transition from with us, learn these independent living skills, and they would eventually go to the Department of Human Services, where they can live for the rest of their life.
Let me ask you, typically, what are the ages? What ages would these?
They would be between the ages of 18 to 21.
18 to 21. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And it's only for ladies?
Six girls, yes, correct.
So, for our village attorney, if a special use permit is provided, does that open the door for other special use permits in the future that we would have a hard time denying if we didn't want to?
No. So, this is part of a PUD. So, they're seeking to amend the PUD to add an additional use here. It's going to be a special use. If they want to add any other uses that aren't already allowed in that PUD, they'd have to go through the same process again. So, there would be another public hearing. This board would see it at the committee level and then back after it come back from the PCC.
But if they wanted to add other additional transitional homes, they could?
That's not allowed by our code right now. They can always ask for us to change the code, but the boards always has the discretion to say yes or no.
Thank you.
I believe that this is actually originally intended to be all commercial on that, or residential on that corner, I'm guessing, right?
That corner was actually supposed to be a mix of office uses, and then residential was an option. But it was like medical offices, dental offices, optometrist offices. They were really into offices in the planned development ordinance for that. They would also be, they could do townhomes or assisted and independent living units as well.
And how much of the 12 acres is buildable, do we know?
I mean, the site plan was almost everything north, with the exception, north of the private drive.
There's that giant berm there, right?
Right. That's where the detention is. That east part is going to be detention. They're not going to be able, that's not going to be buildable. That detention is, has to remain to account for the Claire Oaks development. There are some wetlands to the south of the access road. There's a conservation easement along the perimeter to keep the trees as well. So, if I go back to...
Participants are waiting in the lobby. To admit all participants in the lobby, press * 2, 1.
If you look at this exhibit, you can see that there was a plan for, these were five additional duplex buildings that was approved for Claire Oaks, and then this was going to be the educational facility. They were going to change the parking lot configuration.
And I see cars parked behind Claire Oaks now and a part of this lot that's going to be purchased. What does Claire Oaks use that parking lot for?
That's for their staff primarily, but...
So, are we going to run into issues with parking availability for Claire Oaks?
We have talked to the applicant about making sure that they have an agreement in place for the shared parking.
I personally would rather see this changed into residential or commercial. I wouldn't mind asking one of our officers or the chief, if he's here, I don't think he is, how many calls we get a month to Maryville Academy?
Good evening, Mayor.
So, since the beginning of January to present, we've had 21 calls for service, and in 2023, we had 82 calls for service.
So, that's a considerable amount.
Those calls range from anything, from citizen assist to dealing with missing individuals to other type of ambulance assist and other type of calls for service as well.
And when these, I guess they're called, the residents go run, or whatever it's called, that's a significant amount of police time trying to figure out where they're at and what's going on?
It depends on the situation. So, they're mandated to report them to us, and we enter them into, as a missing person, whether they're going to be a missing juvenile or adult. And then, depending on the cases, we enter them into leads, and if we have to, we'll sign it for further follow-up. And then, if they do return home, Maryville is required to let us know that they come home, and then we follow up with that to close them out as a missing individual.
Thank you, Chief. And I, just because over the last 10 years, I've been privy to the amount of, amount of police time that's spent at the existing campus, I would not be in favor of expanding that campus.
I just have one question.
Even though I do think that it's a great service, I think it's well-needed. But in this particular location, we have very few frontage roads left, especially this high-profile of a frontage road, and I don't believe I would want to have a transitionary home there.
Yeah. I actually was going to ask, why did you guys select this house being on a major road for a transition home versus how your other campus is tucked back, you know, 800, 900 yards back? I was just curious why this particular house was selected.
This particular building would work extremely well because these would be individuals that can get on the train and go to other locations and actually work. So, these are individuals that are independent enough that when they move away from us, that they can have jobs, and they can possibly go into Hanover Park or go even downtown to get a job and actually work. So, these are the skills that we're actually working with them to learn. And it's close to the train station. They can walk to and from the train station.
So, Mr. President, citing your concern about the 12 acres being used for different types of development, and citing your comments that Claire Oaks wants to sell the whole package, they won't sell you just that one piece? I mean, would you be in favor of just the one piece being sold? Just they have the house, or do you...
Not at that location. I just think it's too, it's too attractive for a builder when we start running out of room on the west side of Bartlett for somebody to put in townhomes or something else. But that's my opinion. Everybody else?
Where do the residents go now after they age out?
They go into SILA programs, Community Integrated Living Arrangement. Occasionally, some of them are able to turn home, to return home to families. On occasion, we've had some kids to go into foster care.
So, at 18 to 21, they're going into foster care?
Yes, we have had some to go into foster care. They've returned back to old foster homes where they used to be.
I can second what President Wallace said. I lived in the neighborhood at the corner behind the existing Maryville facility, so I know that there was a lot of traffic in and out of the woods and the tree line, people trying to get away or walking off campus. I just, one of my concerns is it's just on a main street. I mean, it just seems like a lot for somebody else to run out, right in traffic. I get that they're a little older, but, you know.
Is there a difference in the categories of different, like, to your point, the people who are leaving the facility without permission, I guess, right? Is there a difference between, because I don't know what categories of people you have. I mean, so, the people that you're trying to transition, are those people leaving, or is it another group of people that are leaving?
The other group of kids that can leave the campus, we have a program on campus for young girls that are stepping down from juvenile justice, and we also have a Pregnant or Parenting Program on campus, too, as well. And these are kids that are much higher functioning than this particular population that would be, wouldn't be leaving the campus.
How many other transition homes of this nature do you currently have in your...
We don't have another TLP program at all.
No?
No, we don't.
So, this would be the first of this kind?
Correct.
I'm not familiar with your existing site. Is there enough room on the property that you could build a transitional house for, probably save some money instead of having to purchase and...
12 acres?
But they don't need the 12 acres.
Right, I know. Instead of having to purchase 12 acres.
Right, right. Is there enough room on your existing property where it might make more sense to keep everything on campus?
There is room there, yes.
There's what?
There's room on the existing campus to build, but obviously, that's more expensive, might be more expensive than buying this old house. That house has been there forever, so I don't know what kind of shape it's in. But I, again, I, little bit of a history of knowing how many people, how many times we went over there and used police resources to try to fix a lot of problems, and I could see the same thing happening with this type of a facility, right on West Bartlett Road.
Anybody else have any feedback or questions?
Do we want to straw poll it, or do we want more information?
Do you want to take a straw poll? Did I hear you correctly?
Well, that's either we move it to board and vote on it, or we straw poll it now, and we wouldn't, if it doesn't pass, we would...
They can still go to the planning and zoning.
They can still go planning and zoning if they want to.
Yeah, right.
I just think we're, I agree with you. I mean, this house has been here for 50, 60 years. It's been vacant for a long time, but there's never been a for-sale site out there.
Yeah.
So, for not having a for-sale site out there, no developer's ever looked at. That's why I questioned the 12 acres versus just that corner piece, but, you know.
We can move it to planning and zoning if you want. You're the chairman.
Does anybody have a problem moving to planning and zoning, or you want to take a straw poll?
I feel like we've had this discussion, like, didn't we have the same kind of discussion on 59, where somewhere else was trying to build, and we're saying we're running out of, like, desirable spots to build? It's kind of in our whole plan, and now it's going to be many acres that aren't going to have anything else on it?
Yeah.
Well, Dan...
Well, I think it goes against our strategic plan. That's another thing. We're trying to develop the downtown area for office and retail.
I tell you right now, that if you want to move it on to, if you want to move it on to planning and zoning, that's fine. But, you know, maybe I'd have a little more, get a little more information what's happening. Right now, I'm not going to support this program. I'm not going to do it.
And I know I'm not.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'm with Kevin and Ray.
I would say move it to them, so they, we can hear their feedback.
Thank you.
Okay. Any feedback from you guys? Based on that, I don't see the support from the board. You guys are more than welcome to go to the Plan Commission and go through the process and see if the public input, or provide us more information and bring it back to us. That might change the minds across the board here. It's just where we're at today. I just...
It's just the location?
It's the location. I'm, I think what you guys do in Bartlett is amazing, okay? The transitioning for youth and everything you guys do from here to displays in Chicago. I'm very familiar with Maryville's procedures and everything that they do for the community. But as of right now, you guys can choose to go to the Plan Commission as for a public hearing, and maybe more information will come out that will change the board's mind on that. So, that's all I have. I'm going to move on to the next item. If nobody has any other questions.
Possible, we'd like to be able to go on to the Plan Commission so that we could explain in detail our proposal, and I would appreciate that recommendation.
Okay.
Move it to planning and zoning. Thank you, guys, for being here.
All right. Next, next item on the agenda is the relocation of Shelby's Gaming Cafe on Route 59. I'm trying to pull it up here, guys, I apologize. Shelby's Video Gaming Cafe is looking to move to a smaller leased space within the Brewster Creek Shopping Center. The special use permit is to allow video gaming cafe to serve beer and wine that was granted to their previous address at 801 South Route 59, and it is not transferable. Therefore, the petitioner is requesting a special use permit to allow a video gaming cafe to serve beer and wine at 867 South Route 59. Does anybody have any questions about this?
Yeah, they're just moving to a smaller spot.
Moving to a smaller spot. Does the special use that's currently in place, does that get expired then at that location?
Current.
Okay.
Current location.
Current location, yes.
That said, if nobody has any further feedback or concerns on this, we'll send this to the Plan Commission as well for a public hearing. All right, Mr. President, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Gunstein. Finance Committee Chairman Laporte, what we've all been waiting for all night.
We have on the docket this evening the 2024 to 2025 proposed operating budget review. I'll turn it over to staff to kick it off.
Good evening. We're the short straw, and Public Works is going first, so...
Public Works?
First is best.
We can put all first.
First is best. We still have some money left when you go.
That's right.
You go last, you don't get anything.
So, tonight, Tyler and I are going to cover the Public Works budget. I do have Blake, John, and Mike is here to help us with any questions. We'll start on page...
Mike's trying to sell his old house out there.
231 PDF, which is streets.
What was the deal?
31 of the PDF. Tyler's going to cover streets and a little bit of parking, and then I'll cover water and sewage.
It's 231, but you're not going to find it in there. It's on the PDF.
Okay. Thanks, Dan. Thanks, Village Board. Like you said, we're kicking things off, and it's on page 231, starting with streets. Yeah, we'll just be hitting the highlights and then any big changes, but if I skip over anything and you have questions, stop me and we can go over it. So, we got quite a bit done in the last year. First things first, through Illinois Public Works Mutual Aid Network, or IPOMAN, we were able to assist our neighbors in Streamwood and Roselle when they were hit by the large storms and tornado that came through that we luckily missed. And not only is it beneficial to help our neighbors out, because if that ever happens to us, they'll be more likely to help us out, but then we learn more about when these disasters hit, how best to enact the recovery. And then, with that, we finished the whole town when it comes to tree trimming. So, we got through all 15,000 Parkway trees. We did 2,000 in the past year, so now the cycles should be done quicker. And with those improved efficiencies, one thing I wanted to point out is, you may notice on the activity measures later on, that the work orders are down, and I believe that's in part to our increase in tree trimming and our increase in concrete replacement. And then, one, the highlight I saved, the best for last, the columbarium was installed. And with that, so far, we have 24 spots sold. So...
How many are removed?
I believe 80 total, so we still got plenty of room. But that'll be something that, as it starts to get full, we'll budget for an additional one if we find the need. So, moving to the next page...
Additional columbariums? Is there, like, room for additional ones as well? That's what I thought. You could, like, line them up along that back.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's lots of room.
Very nice. Because I'm thinking about that these days.
Put them on the golf course, too.
Don't say that very loud.
Are we marketing that?
No.
Or is this just been word of mouth?
We've been talking to the funeral homes.
Haven't done a lot of advertising, and we've sold over a quarter of them already, so...
And we're making money on them? We're not just breaking even?
We don't, once it's full, it'll definitely make money on those, but...
What's the price of that compared to an actual plot, like in a normal cemetery?
What was the cost of the columbarium?
1,500 and then 500.
No, the cost, our cost when we purchased it.
Yeah.
47?
Yeah, so a little under 50 for the whole thing.
$2,000 a pop times 80, that's 160,000.
It's good math.
And there's also the ashwari in the center, which is a little cheaper, but that'll hold 200? And there's also the ashwari in the center, which is a little cheaper, but that'll hold two hundred? So.
Good job.
So with that, moving on to this year's budget, it has increased five percent, but that is in large part due to the streets budget coming out of the general fund. It doesn't have any dedicated, like, capital line items in it, so those capital projects that you saw in October and November are getting transferred over, so things like Stormwater, the Metro project, which we'll touch on in, like, the town center, you'll see those later. So moving on, then, as I said, the street maintenance summary, everything is staying pretty consistent with work orders going down, tree trimming hours, concrete replacement going up, brine increasing. So no new personnel. Then the capital outlay. So it is a longer list, but the first three were previously approved, but those are those vehicles that we're still waiting on. There's still a two-year waiting time, so they can't come off until we actually receive them and pay for them. So one through three have been previously approved. The new requests for vehicles would be four, five, and seven, and these are just to get them in the queue for, we know we won't see them for a couple of years. They are due for replacement, even if we were to get them immediately, but we know that's not going to happen. And the vehicle eval sheets we used to determine whether they go up for replacement or not are included in here, but we can always send those if you're wanting them in greater detail. Other items include an additional anti-ice skid unit, so this has been helping us immensely with saving on salt usage. I think we've cut that down to about half now. Yeah. So we don't have to use nearly as much salt. We're using more liquid. It's not only better budgetary, but also for the environment. And so right now, we can do the town in about two days, so with an additional unit, we'd obviously be able to do that quicker and more effectively. Some other newer units, the nine and ten, you'll actually see in the other two budgets as well. It's being split amongst all three divisions. When we did the walkthrough with the police department, they recommended security cameras and electronic door access for RPW admin, so we're looking at installing those, and then also purchasing a GPS unit for our engineers and our crews to go out and locate our utilities, so we have the accurate depth and location, and we're not just hoping that we're in the right spot.
Excuse me. So if we go back to the anti-ice skid unit, that's supposed to, what, it does what?
So the best way to explain it is, instead of just using, like, the hard salt, we create our own brine, which is salt and water or a mixture of other chemicals that we then spray on the roads. It allows us to save on salt, because we don't have to use as much, and it's just as effective, if not more.
So, so what's the life of this unit? Okay, and. Okay, and do we know what it's going to save us on salt? Dollar amount?
This was the first year we used it, right?
Oh.
You want it?
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So if we have one already that we've been using, that you built, right? Do we have an estimate of how much that saved us in salt over the life of that? And is this water and brine, and salt, this brine mixture, was it easier on the roads than straight salt?
Right.
So it saves us on future, future road maintenance, right?
And to that same point, so the salt, when it's hard, you'll see it, like, bounce, so it may hit the road and then go into the parkway or into the ditch, what have you. This, because it's a liquid, it hits the road and it stays there. So it actually does what it's supposed to.
The brine mixture's less expensive to create than the actual hard, the rock salt.
We're basically using the rock salt, adding water to create this brine, and then, you've probably seen the white lines that you see on the pavement, that's us spraying the roads. What it does is it gives us time before that snow event. It delays, sometimes even prevents us having to even respond because that salt is already on the roadway, so it never, the snow never attaches to the roadway, so therefore we don't have to.
So we're saving on salt, we're saving on labor, we're saving on man-hours, all that kind of stuff.
Like the event that happened on a couple Fridays ago, that quick snow blast, we didn't have to go out, but we did do this beforehand, where some of our neighbors did go out, so. It's definitely been a benefit, and we feel we could get twice as much done if we had another one.
I do have a question for you, Tyler, before we carry out through the street operating. With the new trucks, I know in previous budgets, we have talked that they are going to be stainless steel frame, stainless steel components. What I'd like to see, or maybe it's already been done, is that our vehicle replacement justification sheet, I think that should be updated to, and amended to reflect what you guys have said is the new lifespan of these vehicles, because they, what we don't want is in twelve, sixteen, and eleven years, end up in the same situation when we're back, and they, you know, they didn't last as long. I think we should really hone in on making sure that that's been updated, so.
I think we could do that.
And along those same lines, space, space them out, so that in twelve or fifteen or twenty years, we don't have to buy three new trucks. We could buy one truck every five years.
Unless you have one truck that has a back ordered part for eight months.
Yeah.
What is the lead time on the ones that you ordered back in twenty-two?
Uh, the ones we ordered back in twenty-two, I believe, are hoping to get in, in May?
Let me ask you a quick question. Go ahead.
Go ahead, no, no.
Before we pass up the security cameras, don't we have a access card required to get into the facility? Like the little gate that goes up?
Um, to go back into the, where the treatment plant and the garage are, there is a gate.
Yeah. But in the admin, there's nothing in front of it, right? And you're expecting, like, people, when their water bill goes up, they're going to storm the castle?
It happens every once in a while.
I just.
We've had some vandalism out there.
Oh.
Some uninvited guests, and.
The beaten path, any problem?
Yeah, we had a, an incident, if you recall, where we had a nonviolent person kind of wanders way through the, through the village hall, and that prompted us to take a look at the security of all our facilities, and, you know, so you'll see throughout the, the budget here, there may be mirrors or cameras or card readers that we're kind of beefing up our buildings with.
Makes sense. Okay, thanks.
And before I, any other Catalina questions? All right, so professional development and associations, no changes on those. So moving on to the expenditures page, just a few things. So equipment rental has gone up, but that's due to rentals for Fourth of July, and then our new roadway weather systems or frost solutions. And this gives us things like pavement temperature. We get to see the weather forecast that's coming in, and it gives us alerts. It's a pretty, pretty cool and effective system that we've taken full advantage of. Exactly. Yeah, so the past, past practice has been, we know a storm's coming, we prepare for it as much as possible, but then until we hear from the police department that, hey, roads are getting pretty bad, we don't necessarily know. But with this system, not only does it tell us future forecasts, it tells us more, it gives us alerts when the pavement starts to get to a freezing temperature, if the precipitation rate gets to a certain amount, so then we know beforehand, and again, being more proactive, where we can send guys out before it gets bad to where the police department has to let us know. And then, moving further down, bike path and sidewalk replacement, that increased, but that's due to the downtown sidewalk and town center improvements that we showed during the capital budget, so that getting transferred over, because those projects are looking to get done this summer and fall. And then the next, train landscaping maintenance, that was the metro landscaping, which is going to take a little bit of a change. Before, it was more the north and south sides. Now it's going to be focused on pretty much the whole south side, where.
I think a week ago or a couple of weeks ago, Metro notified us of their expansion out to Rockford, which is going to have implications for our split platform layout, and Dan, if you want to talk a little bit about that and how that affects our downtown plans?
Uh, we recently met with Metro and to discuss the Rockford service and how it affects Bartlett. It actually affects Elgin and Bartlett. What they're seeing is, the area between Oak and Western is a prime location for a switchover, because the Metro, the Rockford will have limited stops along the way to the city, so they want to be able to switch between the north or the south track with, between freight and with commuters. So that switchover will likely happen between Oak and Western. With that, the platform on the north side, that is currently between Oak and Western, will be moved across from the station, so it'll be, will no longer be a split platform. The platform will be on the north and south side, right at the station. So talking with Metro, it doesn't make sense to do landscape work on the north side of the tracks until they get done with that work, which is scheduled for twenty-six, twenty-seven. So we've got a couple of years for them to get through design and figuring stuff out. I think construction, they're planning on fall of twenty-sixth, and it'll be about a year. So then, when that work gets done, then we would look at doing landscape enhancements and sidewalk enhancements on the north side of the tracks, but we're asking Metro right now, they gave us a hundred fifty thousand dollar grant for this work. We're looking to do it from the Depot Museum all the way to the Metro Station, so we would redo all the sidewalk and landscaping along that stretch as part of the Metro grant.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, Metro is going to eliminate the stop in front of the Depot, the train museum, which is something we've wanted for a long time, so that really, that's really good news on that, so glad to hear that.
Maybe we could talk them into going all the way down to Western with the improvements.
We'll try.
That would make more sense.
Yeah, we'll see how far that, uh.
So are you postponing using this four hundred thousand to a different budget, or are you leaving it in there?
Nope. We're leaving it. We're just going to, it's all going to be spent on the south side of tracks, because they won't touch the south side. So they said that, and we're trying to get, Dimitri, who's our liaison, was in full support of that, so he's bringing that up the ladder at Metro to make sure that that grant funding can be spent on the south side of the tracks. We expect them to agree to that, and we'll move forward with that project.
South side of the tracks west of Oak, or all the way?
Be the whole thing.
From the Depot Museum, so basically Oak all the way to the Metro Station, so it'll be that stretch.
Which we already have a plan in place for that landscaping, correct?
We have it at the Depot Museum. We don't for the piece east of Oak, so we're talking to our landscape architect to add that section, but that would be the plan, yeah.
We're sure they're not going to make any problems on that side.
That was the meeting. They said they are, the main work is all on the north side of the tracks.
That'll be done with the fountain part, too?
Excuse me? So there, uh, the, those two projects are actually split.
Okay.
So the town center is the, I guess, the line item above. That's where that one's coming out of. Our hope would be to bid them, to have the same contractor do both when all is said and done, but they are technically two different projects, because Metro will only fund for the metro area.
So the fountain is in bike path and sidewalk replacement? Is that what you're hearing?
Correct.
So that was part of my question regarding, how did we come up with the four hundred and fifteen thousand?
Estimates through our landscape architect, basically on all the.
That's a lot of work for that small of an area.
Well, initially it was on the south side of tracks and the north side of the tracks, so basically, we're taking that north piece, putting it to that east section, so we anticipate dollar-wise, it'll be similar.
So that was for both sides, and now we're just extending it on the south side? Okay, and my other question on here is, we went from four hundred for the sidewalks to four thirty budgeted last year, and then we're jumping it up to six hundred. What's the reasoning for that?
It's not just sidewalks.
Right.
We have a plan that we're bringing to you to remove the fountain and redo the area that is ours at Town Center.
Okay. Okay.
Any work be done on the sidewalks on the north side of the tracks by the train station?
Right now, only, we would address any type of trip hazard or something like that, but right now, we don't anticipate doing any major work, only because Metro's going to end up doing a lot of work on that north side.
And that's going to be done by twenty twenty-six, fall of twenty twenty-six?
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
That's when they're going to start.
It'll start at twenty-six. They said it would take about a year, so it'll go into twenty-seven.
Can we definitely address some of the trip hazards, if it's going to be two years out now, possibly longer?
Anything where there's brick inlay, that's, you know, the unilock brick, it's kind of.
Yeah, we've had crews down Main Street already dressing some of that stuff with the nicer weather, so we'll definitely have them take a look at that area as well.
One final question that might not be under your control. When I was reviewing this, when you guys first sent it out, I don't understand how we could go up a half a million dollars in two years in employee group insurance, or actually in total personal services. Actually, it goes, it went from three hundred and seventy-six thousand to four hundred and forty-five thousand eight hundred.
Yeah, that one, I'd have to.
And the total personnel services went up five hundred thousand in two years. Two three five, two three seven five, up to two eight one three. And I saw on another form that you guys sent us that there aren't any additional employees. Todd, do you have any good answers for that, half a million in two years?
Uh, I don't right now. I'll have to research that, and I can give you those details.
That would be good. I'd like to hear that on our next review.
What, what is the seven percent increase? Is that essential employee, or?
No, I, I'd have to look at that for sure. I know we had a, a union agreement, but that's not, that's not the whole thing.
So what are the ramifications?
Oh, we did, yeah, that, we did close, when we closed the Brewster Creek Tiff, we did, we were charging our village engineer to the Brewster Creek Tiff a portion of his salary and benefits, and we were charging some of our inspectors, and our public works director was being charged out to the Brewster Creek Tiff because of some of the expenses.
Work that they did out there, yeah. So hopefully we can do the same thing on Lake Street.
So what, yeah, so what happened when we closed the? So what, yeah, so what happened when we closed the TIF? Those salary allocations came back to the general fund. That was part of the, thank you Tyler. That is part of the reason why we increased the levy, the $750,000. Because that money that was being spent, that money that was going towards the TIF, covering our salaries in the TIF, has moved back to the general fund. And so, yeah, that's part of the reason for the increases in salaries. Most of that shift was last year. We talked about it last year, but this year. So for the 23, 24 year, that's when it moved.
It's the full year?
Yeah.
We can have, it's not just public works, so we can get a whole list for you, Mayor.
Right, it was planning and development, a lot of planning and development in the streets mostly.
I thought the levy was due to the police pension.
Okay, we had two, we, the general levy increased $750,000. That was to capture the closing of the TIF, the EAV that moved from the TIF district onto our general roles.
That didn't impact the rate.
So what are the negatives of holding off on this landscaping and sidewalks at the north side of the train station until all of the work is done? And just doing it all at the same time?
So Metro's funding assistance, which is $150,000 of this, has a dead stop at the end of 2025. So even though they're not going to get started on their portion, if we want funding assistance from Metro, that's why it's still in there.
We have to start the work or do the work, have it completed?
Have it done.
And Metro's no longer giving this kind of funding out for municipal projects. This is their last one.
Is it a match? Do we have to match it? Do we have to match the funds? Is it 150?
No match, it's 150 and then we pay whatever the amount is.
The delta is, no more matching grants? No more cookies from Metro after this? No more cookies from Metro after this?
I don't know, maybe.
If they're doing the north side, let's hope they do it well.
I have a question on the snow plowing salt.
Yes.
If we're gonna do the brining system and that's gonna save us and actual expenditures 2021 to, or 2020 to 2023 were under $100,000, could we, in essence, cut the budget from 155 to maybe 100 or 110 and save a couple of shot calls?
Realistically, yes. We've been a little nervous to do that only because the last three winters have been very mild and we're due to get hit at some point. And I don't want to be in a position where we don't have the funding for it. But we could, and then if we did run into a bad winter, we'd be coming back to the board asking for an amendment. So either, however you want to work that.
Something to look at. And then how competitive are the subcontractors, the snow, snow plowing contractors?
The contracts, thank you.
How competitive?
Do we evaluate? It looks like we have three subcontractors and don't municipalities tend to pay a little bit higher? End up paying them more than if it was just a private?
Well, we actually do. We go out and reach out to the other surrounding communities that also have contracts to see what their hourly rate is. And we basically kind of look at that average and select a rate and say, do you want to do the contract for this rate? So there is no coming back to us and changing the rate. We basically secure the rate and tell them this is what you can do it for.
This is what we got.
Perfect, thank you.
So that's just for when our public works doesn't have the, it's too, we don't have the capability?
They do all the cul-de-sacs.
We contract out the cul-de-sacs.
Cul-de-sacs, got it.
And we should probably count up how many gouges they make in the cul-de-sacs and make them pay for the turf too.
So, let me see, if there's.
There's a second sheet that is stormwater facility maintenance?
Yes.
Just because it's probably before my time, it was $116,000, then $300,000, then it went to 777, 777,000. I'm just trying to get an understanding what constituted the need for $400,000 increase in that. Because I'm just.
Yeah. So we, so Stormwater doesn't have its own fund even though it is sort of a utility like water and sewer. So in order to do those projects like the Munger Road culvert replacement or Country Creek that we've discussed before, they have to be included into our operating budget. So with those projects coming, it's caused an increase. There's other ones on the horizon, Newport culvert replacement. We have a few other culvert replacements in the future, so.
700 and something thousand spent last year to do those projects as well?
No. The big one was Munger. That was about 300, I don't remember the dollar amount on that one, but Munger Road was the big one this past year. The big one that's coming is Country Creek. And we've got, that goes out the next several years and then there's going to be a big project where it'll be multimillion dollar project. We're meeting with the residents on that whole thing. But right now, it's at the, getting buy-in from the residents along that stretch. Then proceeding with engineering and then the project. But the project is, we're talking eight to nine million dollars.
For this for?
Country Creek, which is.
The whole subdivision is.
Country Drive, right. Country Drive down to.
Redwood.
Redwood, yeah.
Would it make sense, Dan, to make a, like a sidebar of the water sewer fund as a part of that? And start setting those funds aside versus trying to throw it in the operating budget every year?
Wouldn't really go with sewer and water because those are separate, but we could have a separate like stormwater kind of.
Because we know the expense is coming, just like any other fund balance that we have for capital expenditures. So I want to think about.
Yeah, we show it in the capital and then since we don't really have a utility for it, we've been putting it on the street operating budget under the stormwater category to basically have a.
There goes the streets department budget, or, there's a streets department's bonuses, right?
Yeah. But like that general fund reserve, that would be where some of this comes from or gets added to, things like that. Yeah.
As long as we're counting for it in the overall budget and it's not just something we're plopping in there. Because this kind of looks like we just said, okay, we gotta stick it somewhere, let's stick it in here. And kind of blows the whole thing up.
Yeah, if we could start saving for that now.
Can you guys revisit that 755,000 and see what areas we can do without doing certain projects that might not be 100% necessary?
Look at that. Some of the culvert pipes, like the Munger Road, that was not a planned project. That was a failed pipe, if you remember. We know that we have an issue out on Newport where the two ponds are. We had to do a repair ourselves. So one of the things and why you're seeing these numbers start to come into the capital is we weren't doing inspections of all these culverts. We realize now we need to be doing an inspection of these culverts because they're coming due and we're going to have to do something. Part of that Country Creek project involves several culvert pipes under each one of those roads. If you look at them, right at that water line is where it's rusting and that's where it corrodes and then eventually collapses. So we're starting to evaluate those, we're ranking those and putting them into a program, if you will, of when we need to replace those.
And that, that is something we look at constantly. We evaluate, reevaluate, analyze, reanalyze every single potential project we do and we look into. It's never just a pie in the sky. We're always looking at, do we need to do this now? Is there ways to split it up? What's the highest priority? What's lower? That's something we're constantly doing.
Good deal.
And I would say put, put something in the file, a tickler file for 50 years down the road so that, again, the board 50 years from now doesn't get hit with all this infrastructure work that we're doing now, all at the same time. Just for future.
Honestly, that's what our GS, GIS program does. And identifying and, and mapping and aging our infrastructure so that we have that all documented.
That's what Mike and his group has been working on this past year was actually finding all of the culverts that we have our, that are our responsibility. Getting them into the GIS plan so that we can do an annual inspection to just catch them before they collapse.
Thank you.
You guys are curious about the Country Creek, just go to West Country Road, there's a bridge there and get their residents' permission and try to walk, on some spring day, try to walk south along that creek.
I would, anyone interested, I, I mean, you don't know that it exists unless you go in the backyard.
Yeah.
How many houses are affected by it?
It's a 15-foot, pretty much vertical drop-off to the creek.
How many houses are affected?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two homes?
Yeah.
And we're, I think in two weeks, we'll be meeting with two additional properties. We met with one already, just to see. Yep.
Yeah, we have a whole website link on our website that you can get the PowerPoint of the public meeting that we had last month or end of January. So there's a lot of information. We're gonna, we try to get the residents to keep going there. That's where we're going to keep putting the information. Lot of permitting, so that's why it's going to take years unfortunately to get through that process.
We could get some drone footage to show people, the general public, what, what's involved. To, to hear what you're saying is one thing, to visualize is another, just to get everybody's buy-in.
What else you got for us, Tyler?
Well, that's pretty much it for the streets. I do have parking, which is pretty exciting. And unless someone is really curious, there's not much in there.
No.
Yeah, we, I think we have.
Yup, it's still down.
That's going to change the parking, you're talking about meter parking? That's going to change when Metro moves that platform too.
Oh, definitely. The parking around the water tower all of a sudden become very popular.
Yeah, which is a good problem to have for us, moving that down. Not reducing the income from it.
If we're good with that, I can move on to water.
All right.
Page 246, I'll start there. So on the water side of things.
Just for clarity, what departments are we finishing tonight, attempting to?
We're doing PDS and golf.
So we're going to do water, or water now and then?
Water, sewer, and then golf, and then planning and zoning.
We're doing planning and zoning.
Planning and development. Hers is really easy. That's why we put it in.
Golf is going to be the long one.
We'll go quick. There's not a lot going on. I bet.
Well, we kind of did, we did a lot of golf before, so that's why we're together.
All right.
Go ahead. So on the water side of things, we continue to work on some of our removals, the house, the wellhouse removal. One of the projects that we're working on, now that the wells are removed in the wellhouse right here next to the fire barn. We're looking to have that demoed and put parking in. But we also, at the same time, are looking at a grant for electric car charging station to put there. Grants available right now, that comment is doing. So we're trying to see if we could get some funding to add electric car station there. We've got, the water meter changeout is ongoing. We're about 20% complete at this point. As you remember, that's a multi-year program. But the good news is we had them start in the old part of town where we suspected lead. And our lead numbers seem to be lower than we anticipated, which is a good thing. We were thinking 200 plus based on where they are at so far. We're thinking we're probably closer to the 100 lead services. So that helps a lot as far as funding to be able to replace those services. Continue with our leak detection program. As far as highlights, we are showing a 7% increase mainly because of the DuPage water increase and then consumption. It's tough to know what the year is going to be. Last year, if you'll remember, we, Todd talked a little bit about it. And we had a good year with consumption because we had a drought. If we're going to have a drought again this year, we'll have good consumption. If it's a wet year, then we won't. So it's really hard to guess what that's going to end up. But we've kind of taken average and kind of go from there. One other project that we've been working on with the Fire Protection District is they, they do an ISO rating. And with the ISO rating, if they can get a higher rating, it helps the residents with their residential home insurance rates dropping. So they partnered with us to do some engineering and some testing throughout our system to help their ratings. So we're hoping that that will see some benefits for the homeowners in the future.
So they can dump more water on a fire in shorter amount of time?
Well, know where the water supplies are and have a better idea of how much they can draw out at one time.
Good.
Other than that, unless you guys had any questions on highlights, I can get into the water summary.
We, it's water and sewer. I'm assuming we're pushing e-billing because our postage budget is going up, but don't we have a?
I think it's mainly because the postage rate is going up, but we're trying to encourage e-billing and e-payments and all that stuff as much as possible.
Why can't we make that opt-in again? I know we've asked that before, like opt-in to get paper?
Did you say op, opt-in?
Or opt-out?
Opt-in?
Yeah, like put everyone on e.
In such state, we are going to go 100% electronic unless you opt-in to get a paper bill.
Or opt out of it, you opt out of e-billing, right?
Just the opposite. We want to try to get rid of paper billing. So have a program where everybody gets an email, a letter. We're going to give you, we're going to do 100% electronic billing unless you opt out of it. Then you'll get a paper bill.
This is something we talked about. Wasn't there supposed to be an app designed for that? So that people can download the app and see their bill on there?
Not billing for usage.
For, only for usage?
To our bill.
Yeah, there, there, we don't have the capability for an app for the, for the billing at this time. One of the problems with the opt-in to get to, get it by mail is we don't currently have all of the email addresses or, or electronic contact from the residents at this time. We do have, we are trying to collect that as we go. But a lot of the longtime residents, when they signed up, when we got their account activated, we didn't collect the.
People that don't have your, you don't have, the people you don't have the electronic information definitely have, look at every piece of mail they get from the village.
With the big, bold red letters.
Yes.
So put it on their statement, put it in a letter and say, do you have the option to, we're, we're going to try to go completely electronic to save taxpayer money. And if you really want this, give us a call if you want a paper bill.
You could just do like three months ahead, three, four months ahead of time.
Yeah, it's not that difficult. Everybody that doesn't have electronic email definitely looks at every piece of mail they're getting.
But that doesn't mean they have email.
Well, it doesn't matter. Those, it'll, it'll cut, weigh back on.
It would come back on postage, you're right.
Figure it out when the water shut off.
It's, it's being proactive versus reactive. You can't wait around for, because if you waited around, my wife would never have changed it. I had to change it. She would have wanted that bill come to her every, and we have plenty of electronics in our house, so.
I was going to say, we still have about 2,000 people a month that drop their payment in the drop box.
Well, they can drop it however they want, right? But we're asking.
We can keep the drop box.
Electronically.
It doesn't cost us, you know, they can mail it here. They can mail it or drop it off here.
Last I checked, every, every check that you write has your address on it. So we don't need a paper bill going along with that check.
I just would point out, I pay my water bill online, but I still get a mailed statement for my water bills.
Yeah, you, you can request, you can, so on the website, we do have a form, and we've put in the Bart letter, and we've, we have on the water site, and we've put on the letter that you can sign up for an email bill.
But I, I get a bill, it's paid automatically, but then I still get a bill that says zero balance.
In the mail?
Yeah.
Yeah, so what you should do is you should go online and, and request to have your bill emailed to you.
But can't, we just eliminate the receipt that's being sent, like, why do I need it? If I've already, if I've already go and pay online, why do I still get it mailed?
We don't, we don't have to send you a bill, you just tell us that you don't want a bill, that's what you say, go, go to our website, tell us you don't want the bill, and we won't send you one.
What if, what if we took all of the people that are paying automatic payments and stopped sending them out their receipt?
We send up.
In paper.
In paper.
So, on our new, on our, when you sign up for, for auto pay, you have a spot on there, put your email address, do you want it by email, and most of the people, uh, select to have their bill sent to them by email when they sign up for auto pay now, the problem is, we've been using auto pay for a long time, uh, before everything started to be emailed, and so we don't have those email addresses.
So it'll have to be the same group of people, Mayor?
Yeah, but we can fix it, right? We can get rid of a three-quarters of a person.
I think it's pretty simple, just put it on the next 10 water bills that they get, tell them back to us first, we're going 100% digital, and.
Unless you want.
They have seven months to fill that sheet out and drop it in the box here, if they sign that thing, says they still wanna maintain a paper copy and paper bill, then they opt-in for their paper bill, I think that's, that's what you were indicating, right?
Right.
Give them six months to do it, my grandmother is not gonna go to digital, but I would, you know, so I would see her opting in for the bill, and I think the point is, is just to reduce the over amount, over amount of people that are getting, uh, bills that they actually don't even look at. So, it's something to, it's something to think about, because I think, to your point, postage is, is just climbing every six months, it's ridiculous.
Well, but if, you know, devil's advocate, you're looking at $40,000 in postage, it's a dollar per household in Bartlett.
It's the small things that add up.
No, I understand, so charge the people that want a paper bill a dollar, surcharge. T-Mobile does it.
A lot of companies give discounts for paperless.
Wait to see how many calls Joe gets.
I just forward them.
No, I think it's something that's really an easy fix, and, um, it's the wave of, it's the wave of the future to, to opt out of services, opt, or opt-in to services versus out, because nobody wants to take the time to change it over, but if we be proactive in changing it over and require them to take a little bit of effort to say, no, no, I want the paper bill, I'm gonna drop it in the box, that's the total difference in mentality. You'll, you'll see so many of our, our paper bills not being mailed, thousands probably.
And it is a good way to start collecting the email addresses.
Well, at 40 and under, nobody does anything, my daughters don't have a checkbook, they do everything.
That's a great point, with Trustee Ganzie just.
And Trustee, and Trustee Ganzie said that, I didn't even, I, I remember now getting the bill, the receipt, never look at it, but I get it.
You don't have to get it in.
Thousands of those.
Go to the website, say, don't send it.
No, I understand, we understand that.
I think this is a bulk way of doing it.
We wanna really proactively suggest that nobody else gets theirs either.
Got it.
I think the other part of, uh, what Trustee Ganzie said, I don't know if they heard you, we be collecting email addresses for every business and every resident around here, so that when we do our campaigns and all of our planning and everything we do in the town for events, we now have an entire list for every household, so that actually is one of the reasons to actually push for this, because I think we need to have that communication with our residents, so.
I also think we've hit the point in time where we almost can't argue age, like people who are 70-plus have email addresses.
I also don't want every, I mean, if it was me, I don't want every email coming to be.
Ladies and gentlemen, does, does staff have an idea what board is asking?
Yeah, we got it.
I'm tired of hearing about water bills, let's move on.
It was just postage, Ray, it was just postage.
It was just postage.
Alright.
There's actually, there's actually three-quarters of a employee that does all the billing too, so that can be computerized.
Who's gonna send all the emails?
A computer, AI it's called.
So there is no personnel requests, additional personnel requests, um, capital outlay, we have a truck or van, uh, that was currently in this year's budget that we'll be waiting for, so that's on the list again, and then it's the security cameras and GPS that we talked about, uh, in the street department. Professional development, association stayed the same, uh, as far as expenditures, we talked about the DuPage water, water agreement, mainly that's the rate and consumption estimates that we have, um, you'll see the engineering services is the ISO project that we're working with, with the, uh, fire district, um, chemical supplies, submersible pump, and then, we talked about postage, so, um, overall, 7% increase in water. Any questions on water?
Can we send that out electronically?
Ray, even, Ray, even you can open up an email, you could be our poster child for opening email.
Alright, sewer, I'm on page 261, um, main thing there, you've heard about, we're doing the treatment plant and the Devon projects, those are moving along great, uh, we're actually hoping that those will be wrapped up this year, um, Forest Main actually has made it down to the, uh, down by the salt dome, they're actually making the connection shortly, um, still have the lift station work to get done, some of the equipment have, has long lead times, but we're anticipating having that equipment here on-site this year, so we should wrap that project up at the end of the year, early next year, uh, the treatment plant is scheduled to be online in July of this year, uh.
And speaking of the Forest Main, are we having somebody go back and fix Prospect Avenue?
We will, as soon as the plant opens up, so you're looking at April, when the asphalt plants open up, they will be putting a permanent patch, which will basically be.
Yes.
The center line to the curb, they'll grind and it'll be all smooth again.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a little rough out there right now, um.
Would you put a sign up on Prospect saying, this will be repaired soon?
Yeah, we've called, we've called people, um, Brewster Creek Odor Control, that knock on wood seems to be helping that situation, so hopefully that, uh.
Paying for that.
The village paid for it with violation fees basically, from the businesses in the business park.
And wouldn't the businesses pay for that?
Well, it's $65,000 a year for the chemicals, and the businesses have over 200 and some thousand feet fines so far in three months, I think.
Yeah, they paid for it through violation.
Actually, clearing more money than it's.
And we actually did use TIF money, uh, before that TIF closed out, we were able to buy it for, with the TIF money.
I agree, Trustee Savansky, they should pay for it, but I, I just, I just know from internal numbers that they are more than paying for it.
Is there upkeep and maintenance on that?
Yes.
And fines and other things will continue to pay for that?
Well, we hope to get rid of fines, long-term, that it's not something we wanna deal with, but there's surcharges, and those businesses that are contributing, what we believe are the constituents that are creating the odor, pay surcharges, which will offset the costs of the unit.
And they're also, from what I understand internally, trying to figure out how they can fix it, which has been going on for years. There's ups and downs to bringing in Italian companies, I think.
So, the sewer budget does have a large increase, but mainly that's due to the IEP A loans associated with the treatment plant, uh, renovation kicking in, once you get to substantial, which will be in July, that loan payment starts up, so that's the bulk of what that increase is, you can see in, uh, under the budget highlights, if you factor that out, it's actually a $200,000 decrease in the overall budget, um, so we're trying to keep things tight, um, as far as sewer summary, again, no new positions or changes there, um, sewer operating, we do have a couple of items, um, if you'll recall, when we got into the treatment plant, we cut several things, um, from the original, original project, um, it doesn't mean that they aren't needed, it just means that we couldn't afford them at that time, so we'd like to start trying to get some of those items back into the budget, you'll see a roof that needs to be repaired on the control building, um, and then some kind of renovations within the building, mainly which our guys would be doing the work, um, with flooring, ceiling tiles, lab equipment, that type of stuff, um, and then it's the security cameras and the GPS unit that we've talked about, um. Professional development and associations stayed the same, as far as expenditures, uh, one of the things that we are already seeing, and we hope to continue to see, is with the treatment plant renovations, um, this will be the first year, starting in May, where we no longer will be using chemicals to treat the water, as it, you have to disinfect before it goes out to the river, we typically did that with chlorine, um, now we're gonna be using UV, um, so, and the efficiencies in our pumps and our blowers, we're anticipating fairly significant reductions in utility bills and chemical costs, so these are estimates right now, we're hoping they'll actually be even better than this, we just don't know because we haven't been able to run the plant yet, but, um, so that's one of the benefits I hope to see as we get that new plant turned over to us.
Who drew the short straw and has to go to Effingham, Illinois?
As far as the training, that, uh, that's where a lot of the professional management training's at, um, it's lovely old area.
I was just there.
I digress.
Other than that, I'm open to any questions you may have.
I am good. Everybody ready to move to golf?
Yes.
Phil and Evan and Mike.
We got rid of the printing.
You know what, it's.
I don't know who's gonna go first, you Phil?
I called this for it, no postage though.
Yeah.
Okay, this is Mayor Corde, you for allowing us to present the golf budget tonight, I will take the lead here and present the golf budget, Matt Dearback will present you, uh, ground budget, and maybe whoever, uh, that, we'll do that part, uh, overall, golf is in.
Phil, what page, what page?
Oh, what page? Okay, uh, thank you again for allowing us to present tonight, um, looking ahead, golf is in a, in a terrific place, uh, ever since COVID hit us a few years back, we are projecting this budget, our revenues to increase 6% over this year's budget, couple of the highlights from, from this previous season, we again successfully hosted all of our civic groups, including the Chamber, the Bartlett Lions Club, Special Olympics, um, our American Public Works outing, one of our bigger ones of the year, um, new for last year was our first, uh, family golf night, which was a tremendous success, we had over 60 participants come out, and, uh, we plan on making that bigger and better this year going forward, um, thanks to the board, last year, we were able to install, uh, GPS on our golf carts, which was a huge hit, not only to our customers, uh, but for staff, for our ability to monitor pace of play, uh, controlled cart traffic, uh, we touched earlier tonight on the fact that we were able to take in a lot of money in February and letting, letting golf carts out, uh, GPS was a, a big reason for that, we were able to, uh, control cart traffic and, and take care of the golf course and protect all that work that Matt's done out there, uh, one of the other highlights, uh, ground staff was able to replace and, and repair 70% of our bunkers last year, and we did that for about $15,000, the original bid we had on that was well over 650,000, and that was, uh, in fact, an old bid, we just saw an article in the paper the other day, a golf course in Rockford, uh, approved bunker renovations at 1.7 million, so we have saved.
You're doing number eight now.
What's that?
Eight, it's getting improved.
It's getting, yup, should have, um, I think mostly done by the end of the year. Um, going forward into this year, we have a, a brand-new website that is nearly complete that is gonna allow us, uh, better communication and marketing with our customers and, and better functionality overall, we are requesting a, a slight rate increase for, for golf this year, just a dollar or two on, on some of the green fees, uh, going through the rest of the budget, we are requesting no new personnel, uh, nothing in capital for, capital outlay for golf, and our, our professional development remains unchanged, one thing, as we get to the, the driving range portion of the budget, I am requesting a oil washer, um, for a cost of $5,000 to replace our existing one, which is about 25 years old and can no longer be serviced, um, with that being said, if you have any questions for the golf portion of the budget, I'm more than happy to answer them.
I have to tell you one thing, the sign that we have going into Bartlett Hills right now, wish we would have done it sometime, it was absolutely gorgeous.
It, it does look nice, yeah, it's very nice. We are still trying to find a way to utilize the old one on the golf course as a nostalgic piece somewhere though, but.
Firewood.
Nah, we.
I have a question, so we have the marketing branding campaign coming into play, and I noticed that for advertising, like, we're going down in what we're going to spend, I guess I'd like to hear a little bit more what the thoughts are.
Any advertising that we're doing for, on the golf end right now, is gonna be more social media-driven and through our new website, and I'm actually have a, uh, Zoom call tomorrow with Barstool Sports, that, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna try to become one of their, they're gonna sign up with about 10 golf courses in the air, we're hoping to be, be one of them, and, um, that should really help our, our social media presence and, and bringing younger golfers to the, to the golf course.
And do we have, like, does that like fit like the budget that is proposed here?
Yes, yes.
I have a question for Todd, um, looking at Public Works and looking at golf, golf banquet, and golf restaurant, we're looking at about $62,000 in, in just these two departments in bank charges. Do we have enough money with any one or two or three banks sitting there that we can negotiate the bank charges, I'm assuming these are credit card fees, is there any way we can get those fees down, do we pass that along to the customer?
I can answer part of that, our software that, that we use at the golf course, we, we are required to use, we only have a couple of options, and, and actually, we, we transitioned to having golf now process our credit cards this year, and we did, they did save us a little bit money, a, a little bit on rate, I can't tell you exactly what that is, if we, we need that answer, we can look into that, but, uh, they did cut back from ETS from what we used to use.
I mean.
It's a lot.
The increase that you guys are asking for is, is like $33,000, you know, your, your increase from last year to this year in, in the budget, and $50,000 in bank fees just seems like a lot of money, I mean, that would cover your, with what you're asking, even if we cut that in half, so just something for you guys to look at, something to be aware of, and the same thing with Public Works, their, their bank charges were $6,000, uh, for water and $6,000 for sewer, and again, we should have some pull, being the Village of Bartlett, we're putting all our money in these banks, and I understand it's credit cards, but a lot of the banks offer a credit card service, but, and I, I know, one of my friends owns a restaurant, during COVID, he was paying 9% or 10% in, in credit card fees, and he switched companies, he's paying 3% now, so, just something for you guys to look at, it's not my, it's not my background, it's not my forte, but that just seemed like a big chunk of money.
Well, they pass it along, a lot of, I mean, even V and V Pizano's giving you a discount if you pay cash, because of the.
Like if a bank, if somebody wants to book a, I didn't mean to cut you off, I'm sorry, I was gonna ask that same question, if somebody ba, books a banquet and they put it on their credit card, it's a down payment, let's just say 10 grand, whatever, do we charge? let's just say 10 grand, whatever, do we charge the additional 3% to the customer?
That is correct. So when we do host these weddings, especially for that final payment that they give us, which is usually anywhere between 10 and $20,000, there is a 3% fee that we add to that bill to offset that large charge. We only, we only require two deposits upfront that we don't require that fee for, but that final larger one we do.
Do we have that broken down into the revenue income on the, on the, how much revenue we're getting from just that 3% to offset this?
That I would add, get back to you and find out that specific number. But it is included in the final banquet revenue total.
I think that should be broken out, since we're breaking it out as expenses.
Yeah, I don't, I just think there's a, do we incentivize to not use credit card?
Yeah, we absolutely do. We prefer check and cash when they can and we, we explain that upfront and they know, they know that charge when they, that final balance is paid. A lot of them prefer to use that card though, because they might get points and they're trying to pay for their honeymoon or something like that or frequent flyer miles. So we still encourage them to not use the card, but if they do, there is a 3% fee on that final balance.
That's for banquets, let's talk the merchandise in the store or golf itself. Does that also pose a 3% surcharge?
Not to this point though, that, that is, it's unheard of in, in, in the golf industry to, to add the greens fees and merchandise and stuff. It's more, what I've seen more common in the restaurants are.
I have seen it more and more across the board. Because the credit card companies are getting ridiculous.
Well, let us.
You're right.
Let us entertain you, it's charging during COVID, a 3% fee or a 5% fee for clean, you know, bleach and whatnot, you know, and let us entertain you, you had the option to not, it's a big restaurant.
I will certainly look into, we, we are, we are going to transition to all of our online bookings this year, which, which accounted to nearly $500,000 this past season. We are going to transition to those being prepaid. This, this past year, when you booked a tee time online, you just booked the tee time, you paid whatever fees, you know, you might have paid Golf Now a booking fee, you came to the golf course and you owed that money at the golf course. We're going to transition to, when you book a tee time, you're going to pay for it, you're going to pay for it when you book it. That has become common in the industry. I'm not sure if that may save us some money in credit card charges, because, because Golf Now does our, our processing, but I'll, we'll check with them.
I'm assuming they get a fee for doing Golf Now too, on top of the credit card fee. So there's got to be compiled fee on there, so.
Well, if, if, if you're, so the golf course bank charges were $38,000. If we do 35,200 rounds a year, that's a dollar seven per round. I mean, just, I'm, I'm not saying that a bank shouldn't charge fees, it just seems like a lot of money. It's a, it's a big percentage of your income.
I'm a little confused on no additional personnel. We are estimated to spend 1.627 million on personnel in 2324 by the end of the year and 1.783, that's 150, actually 150 some thousand dollars additional. Where's that at? If you go back to 2122 actual, if we go from there two years ago up to this proposed budget, we're adding over 300,000 and yet we don't have any additional personnel. That would account for how much of it? What did we used to charge and what do we, are paying, what are we paying now?
I have temporary salaries up about 40% for minimum wage employees.
So is that in effect 2022, 23 or was it in effect? That's the difference between 2122 and 2223? That, that's a total delta? The additional hours, how much did the rate go up?
A dollar. About a dollar each year.
So. 300,000 more hours than we had then?
Yeah, so you're going back to 2021, you're looking at the.
I don't care about 2021 because that was a doubt, that was a flop year anyway, that was COVID. I'm more interested in 2022, 23 versus 2425. 150,000 dollar increase, so what you're telling me is that we have 150,000 more hours if it's a dollar additional or take for granted 2 or 3% raise for everyone, that's still a big number. I could probably do the math for you.
Are there additional temporary salaries going in? Because it looks like that's up 8%, so.
Correct. The chefs and the, the line cooks that we have as well as the banquet servers that we have, we anticipated the minimum wage increase, but to get those staff working with us, we had to increase those per hour pay rates just to get people in the building to execute these events. So that'll account for some of that percentage.
That makes sense.
We have a, it's at the beginning where we have the breakdown of the employees per 1,000 population. Comparison excludes fire, park, recreation and golf course. Why are we excluding the golf employees?
The golf is excluded from that because when we do a comparative analysis in that sheet with other communities, most of them don't have a municipal golf course.
But, but the whole premise of this is to compare our, the amount of employees that we have per 1,000 and we have a golf course. But that's a different taxing district, right? Okay, I, I understand what you're saying, but I mean, if we're trying to do a comparison of what, I mean, I, I just think that if, if, if we have a golf course that's ours and they're our employees, Park, Parks, they've got their own taxing district, Fire is its own taxing district, but I think that we should include all of our employees. Because this is a service that brings in revenue for us. We could redo it to limit it that way. I was just curious.
Apples to apples though, because that's important. I, I see your point, but I think it's important to keep it the way it is, so we.
And that's fine, I was just curious why they didn't, we didn't include them and you answered the question, thank you.
So the other question to ask is if we have to meet minimum wage requirements and, and of course the budgets go up every year, are the rates we charging going up to compensate for the increases that are going up? Are the revenue, is revenue going up to match expenditure increases?
On the food and beverage side, we're seeing a 10% increase in all banquet package pricing that we have offering to the guests going forward and that also includes increases in our restaurant and midway pricing as well. On top of that, obviously, we're trying to come up with some outside of the box ideas to increase product sales and all that and we have a few ideas in line that we look forward to implementing in this upcoming season.
On the, on the golf side, we, we did hit the golfers this year with a $2 or $3 increase. We plan on doing another dollar this year. We do have some challenges with, with the construction project going out, the irrigation system, we're going to have a 12 to 16 week period of the golf season where there has been continually be one hole on the golf course shut down for, for that day. We will create a temporary hole, but there's going to be a segment of golfers that is going to say, I'm not getting an 18 hole golf course. We are actually a little apprehensive to even raise a buck or two the way it is because they do have a lot of options to go play 18 holes of golf. So I think going forward next year, we'll, we'll be able to hit with a, with a larger rate increase for that project.
Phil, can you talk about what you talked about this morning about the extended time period for, at the higher rate?
Yeah, one of the other things, it's going to be more than just a dollar or two increase in, in rates. Historically, at our busier, on our busier days, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, well, I'll start with Friday, we're going to transition to calling Friday more of a weekend day typically in, in golf, that's been considered a weekday. Friday is now, you could argue that it's our busiest day, so we're going to ramp up rates more significantly on Fridays. And then on weekends, historically, you have a prime rate in the morning and a rate about 11:00 in the morning or 12 o'clock, you start transitioning to a, a lower rate until you get to your twilight time. I don't see any reason to do that anymore, particularly in our online rate. We're going to hold that prime $75 rate in the morning rather than holding that rate until 12 o'clock, we'll hold that rate till 1:30 or 2 o'clock in the afternoon and I don't think anyone's going to bark at that, those are our busiest times, so.
I guess the, the point is, is you guys see, we all see costs are going up. I mean, you know, minimum wage, the cost of food, the cost of fertilizer, so we, we have to increase our revenue. I mean, it's just, that's how it is, how it is when we're at home. If, if your bills are so much money and you're not making enough, you go out and get a second job. So it's, we're not picking on anybody, it's just, we have to be realistic, even the golfers have to be realistic. I mean, go to the grocery store, everything's going up, so we, we can't be afraid to raise prices if we're just trying to meet costs, that's all.
When you, when you talked about raising the fees per round, were you anticipate, I guess, was part of that increase supposed to pay for the service agreement for the GPS?
Yes.
So, so you said like $2 or $2?
A dollar across the board, there are some, some of our, our late afternoon rates during the week, we're going to increase a couple of dollars and, and like I just mentioned, we're going to, it'll be a more substantive increase on our weekends in the middle of the day, we're going to, those will go up effectively maybe four or five dollars. Online rates tend to fluctuate, you start, you start at a high rate and then as, as time gets closer to that tee time, if you get within a few hours or maybe the day before that tee time and it's not filled, there's parameters in the, in there to, to reduce that rate down to entice people to fill it.
Because a dollar a round would take care of that $29,000 in service fee for the GPS, right?
Right.
I'd like to add something to that and I'll be very frank about it, I've been playing golf for a long time and golfers are real fickle. I mean, they, I've seen it where they'll go somewhere else to play for a dollar or two less a round, I mean, it's unbelievable. You come over to Bartlett Hill and you can confirm this because, you know, right Phil, you've seen that, haven't you? I know for a fact that Phil does do a survey of all the clubs in the area and we're extremely competitive, okay? And the ratings that we're getting for the course that these people are playing is magnificent. We have some of the highest ratings in the area for a public course, but trust me, you, some of you that don't play golf, I'm telling you the truth and I've been doing this for many, many years, you know, I've seen people book other courses because, for a dollar, I've seen it and that's how fickle some of these guys are and you can bring the best to them that you possibly could and they have this mindset that this is what they want to spend on golf and go somewhere else. Now, keep in mind, we did 32,000 rounds of golf at Bartlett Hills last year. We're raising the, the price now a buck. If we can do $32,000 a round, you know, that is going to offset quite a bit of this. And in addition to that, you know, the booking that you're working on with the credit card deal, that's all a plus, that's something that will help, to help Bartlett Hills. But I'm telling you guys, you know, the, the way that course is operated right now and what that, the staff out there is doing far exceeds some of the other courses that I've seen and I'm a member of one of those clubs. So that, so anyways, for the staff of Bartlett Hills, thank you very much, I think you're doing a great job.
What do we, what do we think the potential is, if we did 32,000 rounds, we have this marketing plan, what do we think the potential increase of rounds that we could have?
I mean, if, if we could get to 35 or 36,000, that would, that would be, yeah, absolutely fantastic. Now, you're, 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 you're talking about getting lucky with weather to get to those numbers, you know, fortunately, like we, like we did in February, you know.
Repeat, repeat what you said when you first sat down, talk about the weather, that's one thing I want to add, you know, the golf is, is all weather related, but talk about what happened in February.
In, well, in February, we, you know, we're very fortunate that, that we stay open all winter, most golf courses close down or maybe they allow walking or they just, they have temporary greens, which is.
I'm talking about the dollar amount, what we did last year and the increase this.
We did last year in February, we did, we did a little under $3,000, I think in total, but that was mostly simulator revenue. This year it's close to 60, little over 60 when you combine what, what the bar did on top of the greens fees carts and, and some of that's, some season pass money that's come in, that's, that's going to come in anyway, a lot of, a lot of our, some of our season pass guys are buying their pass a little earlier because the season is.
It's a $50,000 shot in the arm that we got, you know, just because of the weather, so thank you.
Yeah, and, and largely, a lot of that revenue is due to that, to having GPS on the carts, that, that was, without that, we wouldn't have been able to capture that money.
Yeah, in the past, we would not have let carts go at all February without the GPS. Now with the GPS, we can make sure the golf carts are on the path the entire time because the GPS keeps them on. Back two years ago, last year, we would have not let them out because the golfers would have gone all over the golf course, they would have set the golf course back months with all their cart traffic and being too wet. Your guys investing in the GPS has been very beneficial this year.
I want to also go back to last year when we did approve the budget for the sprinkler system, irrigation. The increase in rates for golf was to pay back portion of that irrigation system and the GPS was the year prior, if I'm not mistaken, or the budget prior to that. So the increases in the, what we're charging for golf is to cover or to repay the fund that the irrigation system was taken out of, portion of it. So I do agree with Ray that there are a lot of people that are finicky about what they're going to pay, okay? I personally think that Bartlett Hills is one of the best courses around and if somebody's driving to Bartlett Hills, I think they're going to golf there. And if it's $76 or it's $74, I don't think, I don't think $2 is going to make a big difference. But if you wait this year and not increase it because of the construction, I think next year, when you have to do a $2, $3 increase, I think you're going to see a bigger resistance. So.
Yeah, I agree with Dan.
I think you might want to rethink that and I, I think the course, even if it's under construction, is far better than every course in Bartlett and it's definitely just as good as going to Elgin Country Club or, you know, Royal Fox as far as the quality of the greens and the fairways and everything else. So you guys do an amazing job and when you say it's a public course, it's treated like, and it's kept up like a private course. So it's of that same caliber, in my opinion, and I'm not a professional golfer by no means, but I think, thinking about raising that rate slightly, even incremental, is going to help from today to when that sprinkler system, irrigation system is complete. Because I think that would help generate some revenue, even if it was 50 cents a round and that, you know, or other areas to raise, you know, whether it's a beer or whatever, I'm just saying, it's, it's not a bad time to do it.
If we can't increase the rate, then we have to cut costs. You know, if there's a 9%, 8% increase in salaries, 5% increase in temporary salaries, 88% in service agreements increases, these are increases, 71% increase in materials and supplies, 33% increase in uniforms, 20% increase in automotive supply, 50% increase in golf cart maintenance materials, 100% in golf, golf club rental. My point is if, if your vendors, our vendors are increasing their costs, we either have to cut expenses so we don't increase our cost or we have to increase our cost so we can keep up with the people that are charging us.
We, we, you know, we've always been known as a value course and we're starting to drift from a value course to a premier course. Last year, we had the largest increase in greens fees. Last year, we had the largest increase in greens fees that we've had in the previous seven or eight years. So we have gotten more aggressive. Phil and I are meeting with Golf Now next week to talk about dynamic pricing and our prepay model. I think our prepay model is going to bring us in quite a bit more money. We have more analysis to do to figure out what that amount is. But what this irrigation system will do, what this GPS will do is, it will allow us to be more aggressive, and we are planning on being more aggressive. In terms of the days where the course does have an extra temporary green or a temporary hole, we'll have to take that into consideration. But the irrigation installers are going to stay away from key days where we don't, where we have an outing or weekends, they won't be closing a hole that day. So we'll be able to cherry pick some days and be more aggressive on our pricing structure, if that makes sense.
One last item, the GPS service agreement is $29,000, so it's about a dollar a round. I believe, if I go back through the tapes or the notes, we talked about advertising on those GPS units to cover some of those costs, like either restaurants or local businesses to, to offset some of that cost. Has that something that you guys have looked at or thought about?
It's, honestly, we have not. It's something that we can certainly look into, that, that's a great question.
It's a zero dot, that's a 100% revenue stream with very little to put out for it.
I've looked at it quite a bit. Most municipalities and park districts advertise their own materials on that. We're also looking at food and beverage, and Evan is looking at possible notifications to Midway to order in advance. There are some challenges to advertising. I will, I'll let Kurt kind of talk about that. We've talked about it a number of times.
Unfortunately, we're still a government, so our ability to regulate what goes in there is somewhat limited. So while we might be able to allow advertising, our ability to pick and choose who advertises is much more constrained than the private sector. So we can do it, we just might not have a lot of control over what's going on there.
You open up the-
Caution I have.
You open up the floodgates to-
It would be interesting to see pictures once in a while while you're driving around, looking at the GPS, just pictures of beautiful wedding banquet, right? Because there's a lot of people that golf, over half the people that golf at our course are from out of town, so advertise our-
Not only that, but there's some, you know, community events, for example, that are happening with the village that we're looking to also add to that platform as well.
I think that's an, that's an easy thing for us to do, Mary. You're right.
I think getting food and beverage to work with golf and have something where you can say, hey, a bucket of beer or a cooler of beer for $1,299, you're raising the ability to bring more money in.
Yeah, that's already part of the plan going forward for this year. We already know how to implement that into the GPS system, and just once the golf course gets going here, we're going to make sure we have that when we have our full restaurant opened up, on top of promoting the restaurant and the midway, but also certainly the banquet idea is always a good one.
Didn't, weren't we able to order from there, like the cart would come to you? Like if the beverage cart could come to you?
We, because our beverage cart does not have a GPS system already on it. The only way that the GPS would be able to communicate with a food and beverage distribution area like the midway would have to be at the midway. We could certainly probably implement-
Yeah, we, we could add a GPS unit to, to the beverage cart.
Yeah.
It's more, it is a nice function to have to, at least for the beverage cart person to know that someone on the opposite end of the golf course is requesting them. They're not just going to drop everything and drive over there because they've got a number of customers. They're, they're going in a rotation and, and serving customers.
But there is potential.
And while not exactly the same philosophy you're talking about in terms of ordering, we are going to have a hot box in our beverage cart that will be able to host hamburgers, hot dogs, things of that nature. So it'll be, instead of waiting till midway, you'll be able to order those foods on the spot, and it'll make pace to bake quicker when they turn the, to the back nine.
Grab and go now, too?
Yeah, so on top of all of these ideas, which do definitely have potential, we've also implemented a bunch of new coolers that we've installed in the bar restaurant area as well as the midway area, where it just offers another ability for the customers to quickly grab those products in order to make a profit. So these are going to be grab and go coolers, but they can go in, non-alcoholic, of course, that'll have to be with a qualified attendant, but Gatorade, sandwiches, fruit cups. We're able to not only implement more product to be taken from the, the customer, but also we can put new products in there that we've never done before, and we've already have those installed right now, and you can see them on a daily basis when you stop in.
Nice. I think we need to be reminded of, the reason we increased the fees last year is because we had been operating at a negative balance for many of the, out of the last 10 years, probably seven of the last 10 years. Then we added an irrigation system, which is going to cost us another roughly $100,000 a year. So now, we're $200,000 a year in the hole, and now we're asking for increases too. So it's important that we don't forget the past and understand where we're at. We're just trying to break even and make some cash on, on the upside of it. But we've been operating from a negative for a long time. We can't be afraid, if we can't raise the fees, then we have to lower the expenses. That's it.
For banquets, do you, do you track, on your bookings, do you track where these, where these people come from? I mean, did they come from the, the Knot or the Wedding Wire or just word of mouth? Do you keep a track of that?
Absolutely, yeah. All banquet clientele that book with us, or at least for weddings anyway, because those are the big moneymakers, we give them a survey that I would say 85% fill out and give back to me, which is very good, and it allows us to get some data. Theknot.com, our highest advertising platform, is definitely the most popular right now. I would say probably 60% of all couples hear us from the Knot, and we generate the most business from them. Wedding Wire is also on there, not as popular for whatever reason as the Knot, but certainly one of the big top three key players when it comes to wedding, just a wedding platform in order to get couples and people from around the community and the general area to see Bartlett Hills. And then lastly, which has been kind of our bright spot here for the last two years, is a new, somewhat of a new upcoming wedding website called Zola. And Zola, which is fantastic, is probably a fraction of the cost as far as advertising to get wedding couples to come to our banquet facility, which is fantastic. And what's nice is I'm getting more leads and more bookings from Zola in the last two years than the other couple of wedding websites. So that's just been a huge profit killer for us, just because we're able to get so many more leads, so many more clientele coming in through the door at a fraction of the costs as of the other websites. The only downside is you can't ever get rid of the Knot and Wedding Wire, because those are just nationwide, the biggest key players in the industry, and everybody is on that. Zola is probably our second most popular wedding website now after the Knot, but I can't ever underestimate word of mouth and just the quality of service we do here at Bartlett Hills through the staff, and just people constantly calling me again for, hey, we did a wonderful job on your event. We are coming back to have our baby shower next after the wedding, and anniversary parties, retirement parties, just does, they keep coming back, and we're happy to have them, and I'm glad our reputation precedes ourselves.
Evan, it sounds like diversifying the platforms you're on has been working, having the Knot, Wedding Wire, Zola.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. You have to.
So what are some of the plans? Because I, I believe with the market, the branding campaign, they talked about like paid, paid search, so that, that if someone was looking for weddings organically, typing it into Google, that we would show up. Is there a plan for the budget here or moving money from the Knot?
Yeah, I would love to do that. Maybe Wedding Wire, because it's not as effective, but then, yeah, we can start looking at those pay-per-click Google searches, just to get our brand up on those Google searches as is. You can always do that organically, too, through more prevalent social media marketing and all that, through Instagram posts, Facebook posts. You just have to keep on it, though. I mean, it's like, you've got to do it multiple times a week, if not daily, just to kind of get that up.
So how will that be covered in this budget in front of us for next year?
That's something we're going to look into right now to see what that cost will be going forward and how to implement any sort of Google searches to increase that presence on the website, or online.
But I think we have that flexibility in the marketing budget.
Yeah, we can, we, we're not, those other wedding websites that we have, we pay, I think, maybe quarterly, and we're not obligated and contracted with them to use all of that marketing budget in that specific avenue.
Your, your wedding menus and your packages are very appealing and nice. I do notice that we include the wedding cake, though. Is that-
Yeah.
-normal, because wedding cakes are very expensive.
Oh, we get, we use a wholesaler wedding company called The Baking Institute, so an average wedding cake for us is $200 to $300, depending on the quality of it, and we can just incorporate that in that per-person price cost. And the expense of a wedding, $200 bucks for a wedding cake compared to the food cost for steak and all that is just a drop in the bucket. So it's a nice feature to have, that you can offer those clientele a four-course meal, including the dessert, and they don't have to go and shop on their own to get a wedding cake.
The wedding cake would be a lot more than $200.
Yeah, I know. We have a very nice deal that we're working with this company. They do a great job. We've been using them for over 10 years now, and they haven't really let us down, and it's just such a nice little feature to have to offer to that clientele.
Okay, thank you.
I have one last thing for Phil. I just want, because I don't really know, like, you have a pro shop with all the shoes and the balls and everything. Do, what do we make on like a pair of shoe? I'm just asking because I'm trying to figure out if the companies that provide the shoes or the rental clubs or the clubs that we sell in there, can they put them on consignment where we're not putting out the money?
There, there's a, some of the, a lot of the golf clubs end up being on consignment, and in fact, I am going to be sending shoes back anytime. Shoes a lot of times are in consignment, not, not all the time. Honestly, we're kind of transitioning away from golf, golf retail now, people are going, they're buying everything online, they're buying it at Costco. What I'm seeing in, as far as golf apparel especially, people aren't spending $80 on a golf shirt at a municipal golf course. They're, they're going to Sam's, they're going to Costco, they're going to Target to buy that thing. So, so we're looking at scaling back our offerings in the golf shop and focusing more on the impulse buys, which are golf balls and gloves and tees, the things that people absolutely have to have. They don't have to have a new pair of shoes, they don't have to have.
So can we reduce this $4,000 golf shoe purchase down, or we, we actually spent $4,000 in golf shoes?
We will, we will purchase that many. I will probably end up sending a lot of those back. You have to bring enough in to have enough sizes for people if you're, if you're going to carry them. But Adidas has been very good with us in allowing us to send product back.
And how many sets of golf clubs are we planning to rent?
That's a, that's a great question. So a few years ago, prior to COVID, it was just a handful a year. Our, I'd have to look at our numbers. We, we, we're going to rent them probably hundreds of times this year.
No, no, no. How many sets do you think you'll get? Three? Three full sets?
Well, how many am I, how many am I going to-
$3,000. How many sets of golf clubs?
Those sets, probably about five or six.
Okay. And rent them for $50 a round?
$40 is what we rent them for.
And then when they're, when you're done, we sell them?
The current ones I have right now are so old they have no value. We are sending stuff out that's almost embarrassing right now.
That's why I'm asking, is it, can we go to Wilson or one of the companies and say, hey, can you, you know, we'll put your clubs on consignment, can you give us a few sets for rentals, you know?
Actually, there is, there is a, a deal I am working on with Cleveland Strixon to, to send us rental clubs that we would be able to use as rentals and send back, actually at no cost. So that is a possibility. They have not finalized that program yet, though.
I'm glad to hear that, because those are little things that just add up, and those are areas where we dissect them through the numbers and-
Like I mentioned, a couple of years ago, a round of clubs were not even a thought, and now with the amount of new golfers that are in the game, that we get their requests more and more often.
Do we know how much, on average, we receive in revenue for bar, midway, that type stuff a month?
A month? It depends on the weather, of course, and how busy the golf course is.
There's got to be an average over the years.
Yeah. I, I don't have that number right off the top of my head, but that's certainly something I can get to.
Yeah, I'd love, I'd love to see that, because I just added up the basic salaries that we have for midway, the banquet facility, and the bar, and they total $454,500. So if we aren't making, we aren't making enough to cover that, that's a good place to start.
Is this what your salaries are for season, right?
Correct. These are just regular.
I'm going to ask a question that's probably, you know, something that everybody's thought about when they've gone to Bartlett Hills. Do you feel that if you had a wedding venue, like a trellis and seats outside or somewhere, do you think you can charge more for a wedding that would cover those costs?
Yeah, there's no doubt about it. One of the limitations we have at Bartlett Hills as a venue is that our, the inside of our facility, the reception hall, can hold up to 220 guests. That's what we average with the dance floor, 250, no dance floor. However, our ceremony space currently on the patio outside can only hold 150.
So-
And the inside area, when it's a bad weather, can only hold 150. So that discrepancy throws some people off when you're trying to sell the place.
Why couldn't we use the land that's directly across the street, across from the midway? It was a, looked like a former putting green, and it's a very large area that, we've walked it, I think I walked it with Ray ones before and Joe, that it's, it's a large enough area that I think it would make a good area to, to host that.
Yeah, we've certainly thought about a lot of different areas on the grounds, because that's one of the number one questions people, or the clientele would like to see, a nice grassy area. It is difficult to find an open area that is safe and conducive to get people out there and traveling, whether or not we're getting golf carts to get some of the elderly out there, too. And golf is super busy during that point, too, and we can't-
Having a wedding, like a wedding right at that, where that putting green is, and now you've got your, your golfers, cart traffic, you know, zooming in and out of there, I don't know how attractive that would be to a wedding.
I just think it's important that we actually do explore that, because I think that as time goes on, people are looking for that newest venue thing.
Yeah.
To Kevin's point, if we have to cut some salaries to reduce our costs, then maybe we can afford to look into putting that in to raise the bar on our banquets and raise the income, which will justify additional salaries.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's just, it's a vicious circle. I know we have to spend money to make money, but if you can find a spot to put it, I think it's, it's an important part of the puzzle.
First step to that is relocating of the dumpster that's back there. We met with a garbage company yesterday morning to look at that. So that's, that's, that would be the first step in clearing off that back area and making it suitable for that, so.
Don't you put it up by Matt? He's got plenty of room up there.
Yeah. Nope. They didn't like that.
I just think it's something we should keep on the horizon.
Matt's like, hell no. I don't want to smell that, are they?
Okay. Just wanted to, here, I'm, I'm on page 59, it just shows the revenue. I don't know if you, I didn't talk about the revenue side, or we talked about it, but on page 59 is the breakdown of the revenue for the golf, and we are, this budget is proposing to be just even. It's planned, the revenue is budgeted to cover the expenses. It shows the previous years. I think the 23, 24 estimate, we're planning on actually making $24,000 and then pretty even for the, for the budget is what we're going forward. I'm just, I'm going to pass this on to Evan.
Pass it over to Matt.
All right. I will start with our personnel requests, and we have none. The next page is capital outlay, and that would, would be the irrigation system, and that was approved in the CIP. The next page is professional development, and that will be decreasing by 61%. We took out the national show, and we replaced it with some online university courses that are six to eight weeks long, so a little longer than a week compared to the national show. The next page is professional association, and this is the same as last year. And then the final page is the expenditures, and the majority of our line items will be staying the same or decreasing. And our biggest increase, one of our bigger ones, was the grounds maintenance material, which we are replacing 20-year-old garbage cans and tea markers that are also 20-plus years old. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I just have a comment. I played actually a few days ago, and it was very busy, and so many people from, that didn't know who they were. They were coming from all over the place, I think, Phil. I mean, they were coming from everywhere. And two of the guys that we played with are from Glen Ellen, and I said, do you guys play Glen Ellen Country Club? And they laughed. I said, when we go to play real golf, we go to Bartlett.
We've got, we've got a great, great product. Banquet golf.
They said about Village Lakes?
No, they said about Glen El, or not Glen Ellen, Bloomingdale, Bloomingdale Country Club.
Oh, okay.
Bloomingdale Country Club. That makes sense, right?
Village Links, that's pretty.
I think we're on par with Village Links.
Well, thank you for working to think outside the box to bring more revenue in. We do appreciate that.
Definitely.
Gentlemen, keep up the great work.
Are you going to be long-winded, Stone? Stone, are you long-winded?
The answer is no. A jerk.
Are you asking for anything? Yes or no?
I'm asking for two cars, but I'm getting rid of three.
So, that's all we need to know.
She wants four, Roger. Now, I just want you to get that one.
See, it comes up here. Is this, is this the carryover or is this a third?
This would be a third.
She's leasing.
Four cars, then?
What?
You'd be getting rid of four?
Getting rid of four. We already got rid of the first one in advance. So we got rid of the first one. We made more on that auction than we anticipated, so that covers the whole range I had.
Is there an incentive for us to put EV chargers in? Is there an incentive for our inspections to do EV vehicles?
My concern is that our vehicles are kept outdoors.
The budget for that is very concerning. I, with the, I think everyone heard about how there were EV vehicles that were not able to hold a charge in the winter. With our vehicles all being kept outdoors, that's a major concern that my inspectors would not be able to get to the sites that they need to get to.
Don't say that too loud. We're switching the police vehicles all over to EV, too.
Well, be careful because a lot of the car companies are getting out of the EV business. So maybe look at hybrids if you want to go down that road, but.
I just was asking if there's a budget.
EV is going to be short-lived.
Incentive, that's all. Stay focused. But stay focused here.
So I'll go over some of our highlights quickly. Grassland subdivision started construction this year. 11 traditional single-family homes, 19 ranches, 14 duplexes. I'm anticipating at least 50 more of the, in phase one. I'm expecting several of the townhome buildings to start construction this year and staff is currently reviewing the residences at Bartlett Station and hoping to break ground on that this summer. So residential permits are going to be going up. This year, we got to celebrate the grand opening of Moore and Aldi and then the two car dealerships. I'm expecting more commercial developments this upcoming year. Really hoping that the plans that we have for a retail center next to True North on the west side of town, that that'll get through the Planning and Zoning Commission later this year. We've had two new buildings starting in Bluff City Industrial Park. Construction completed on three buildings in Blue Heron. I have another one under construction and two more permits should be issued in April or May. The only sites that are going to be left probably after May are going to be right at the northeast corner of West Bartlett and Route 25. We just talked to the broker today. He wanted, they have a new broker for the parcel that's referred to as the Kenyan piece, technically not part of Blue Heron, and they're wanting to start marketing that more aggressively. The self-storage facility is under construction in Southwood Business Park and then there will only be one lot remaining in that area for development as well. Brewster Creek Business Park had two buildings completed this year. Three buildings and two additions are currently under construction. I have four building permits under review and we're down to five available sites within Brewster Creek. Building permit reviews with Open Gov, I cannot go on and on about how great that is helping our department function. 52% of permits are approved within two days, 72 are issued within a week. Our inspections have jumped up by 1,300 this year. I love being able to run reports and see how quickly everyone's doing their reviews and if I see someone's going past the due date, it's really easy to find out what's going on. Same thing with code enforcement. If I notice there's a gap between the first and second inspection, I'm able to go in and our inspectors are keeping track. I talked to the homeowner on this day, they're having this problem, they told us it'll be resolved. So we're trying to work with people and it's so nice having that information in the system that we can access at any time. Code enforcement is starting to focus on more than just property maintenance. We're looking to make sure people are renewing their business licenses. That's also helping us track new businesses that have gone in that maybe didn't get the change of occupancy that they have to get from us. So we're finding a lot of checks and balances in the system. Overall, let's see, if you want to go to, where's the overall chart? So I have technically lost a position this year. We decided to outsource our health officer at kind of the beginning of this fiscal year. It's worked out really well. It's been a good cost savings for the department and I think that was a great move for us overall. Todd, if you could go to my overall expenditures, the whole chart. Almost everything is staying the same. Our personnel, our salaries are going down because of the health officer position being eliminated. We were getting some salaries out of the TIF and so that difference is in there as well. I am requesting five Blue Beam licenses. It allows us to do plan reviews so we can draw directly on the plans. There's no confusion between what we're asking for. It allows us to measure, which is something that you don't get with a lot of the PDF editors. So that will shorten our review times as well. Our plan reviews, we're, I'm still budgeting $50,000 for plan reviews. I'm hoping to see that decrease, but I still want that cushion in there. We just hired a plan reviewer who is phenomenal and so we're able to do a lot more in-house. But just want to make, I just want that in there for a cushion while we have these multi-story projects going on. The 400% increase seems like a lot for inspectional services, but that is because of the health officer being outsourced. So overall, my budget's going down by 2%. There were some changes. We had a retirement, we hired someone else at a lower rate because that person had been a very longtime employee. We're kind of looking at building the bench, making sure there's positions so that we can keep really good employees, that there's chance for advancement because there is such a value in institutional knowledge. And as people are starting to retire out, you want to have people that come here, work for us and stay.
Can, and I, can you just, and you probably don't have it, but maybe you could get us the information, a dollar amount on how many, on how much building permit fees with commercial and industrial have been waived or reduced?
I would have to. I don't have that offhand.
You can get us that information?
I can look at that, yeah.
I have a question. I noticed on your general expenditures, you don't have credit card fees, but I do know that I paid a credit card fee for my permit. Are you just rolling that into your total revenue?
Correct, because that is, it's not a transaction that we're dealing with. It's all going through Open Gov, so it's nothing that's getting assessed.
So they do charge a 3% fee, I think it's three or three and a half, on top of all permits paid with credit card, correct?
Correct.
I like when you license your car.
That's it. It's just, I just noticed it wasn't a line item on her budget, so I thought it was, I'd ask, so.
I like it when we have a negative 2%.
The decrease in the salaries is just offset by the third-party health?
It's more than offset by the third. It's more than offset by the third party.
Yeah.
I know 400% seems like a lot, but it's, it's really not.
If you, if you subtract the two numbers, the salary was ballpark 45,000. And so by eliminating that position, she got three years out of the 15,000. So one year's salary is equal to three years now, under your temporary, so good job.
What's the anticipated time to get those vehicles? Is it going to be another couple of years?
No. So the vehicle that I ordered in October, they were able to send it, to officially place the order in January. They're hoping I'll get that one before the end of this fiscal year. So as soon as I get the go-ahead for this, in May, I'll be placing the order for the others, too, and they're thinking that we'll be able to get that one within the fiscal year.
Can't we just get some Hyundai Santa Fe's? We have a dealership right here in town.
We're going to have, we're going to have a little surprise at the next meeting, too, I think, about some donations, so. So who are the code officers that drew the lucky star to go to Long Beach, California?
That is not a code officer. That would probably be our building division manager or our plan reviewer.
It says two code officers, too. Well. Overall, no questions for me.
No, no, the code officers are not going to Long Beach. Those are just training seminars. There should be another line in that, there should be another row.
Oh.
Reading those, too.
Did I get somebody excited accidentally? If they need the mayor to go to the ICC annual conference, I'd be happy to go with them. As long as it's in December or January and not like July. Oh, it's in October. October's okay, I can go. Who's the head of that department, building and zoning? Dan, you're going to Long Beach.
That's good.
That was quick. Good. Any, your show.
I have just one question unrelated, but can you just give us a two-minute review of Seth Lewis's email?
Sure.
And how that affects Bartlett?
You're talking?
Senator Lewis?
Yeah. So that is the grocery tax that's being suggested to go away. There is no actual bill for that yet, but we're anticipating that one would be coming because of the governor's budget address. So we have, we still get our 1% plus the 1% of our home, but the pass-through that comes through the state is about $200,000 to $300,000 that we will not see. It's revenue that the state collects but then passes through, so they're just not going to do that pass-through anymore.
Is that 300 annual?
Pardon?
300,000 annual? Okay.
So the Northwest Municipal Conference and DuPage Mayor and Managers are putting together the kind of one-cheaters that we did for LDGF so that we can go down at the drive-down. That's one of the talking points that we can have with our legislators about it. And Seth really, the note that, the newsletter that he sent out to us really, I thought, capsulized very well what the impact is across the state, but I wanted him, I wanted him to have that information for Bartlett specifically.
Perfect, thank you.
I just want to thank all the presenters who put all their time and efforts into that. It was very well done and he's got, next two weeks, we got to do this all over again, so great job.
You can do it. I'll let you through the rest. Early start next time.
Earlier start? Okay. Thanks.
Is that it, Mr. Chairman?
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Laporte. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Agreed.
By trustee Dany, seconded by trustee Hopkins. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Dany?
Yes.
Gansey?
Yes.
Dunstein?
Yep.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Laporte?
Yes.